All right, glad to call this meeting in order. I thank everyone in order for coming and welcome you all. Thank everyone who's watching live stream. I'd like to start us with a prayer.
Let's pray. By God, we just thank you for the state and thank you for the opportunity to come together into fellowship and give you all the honor and glory that you're owed for everything in our life. We ask you now to just give us the wisdom and the knowledge to make decisions that will be pleasing your side. Dear Lord, we ask you now to bless each of us that are here tonight, touch us in a mighty way. And dear Lord, if there's one here that doesn't know you, we just ask that not someone would take the time to share and tell about what you've done in their lives. We ask that we use this and do have us to do exactly what we've done. Please you and God's side me, Christ, may we pray.
Amen. Freedom of information announcement in accordance with the State of South Carolina Code of Law nineteen seventy six has amended. The Marion Star Muller's Enterprise has been notified of date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting. Number four, approval of minutes, July eighth, two thousand twenty five, July tenth, two thousand twenty five, special call meeting. Got a motion, got a second, any discussion? On the first say aye.
Aye.
Both likewise, ayes have it. At this time, we recess regular meeting and open up a public hearing. I need a motion.
Oh, second.
We got a motion, got a second and discussion. On the first say aye.
Aye.
Both likewise, ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For all of those in attendance, we have one item for public hearing this evening. This is for ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero seven. An ordinance to authorize the conveyance of a portion of Marion County Tax Parcel Number zero one nine dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero six five dash zero 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 containing one acre off of Highway five oh one to H T C Incorporated. Show it to the terms of the purchase and sale agreement attached here too and made a part here of to authorize the county administrator or the county chair and the chairman of county council to execute any and all documents for the conveyance and transfer the property and to authorize all other matters related there too to effectuate the conveyance. Anybody in attendance wish to speak for hence this order? Here none, that will conclude our session of public hearing.
Thanks, sir. At this time, we were adjourned to public hearing. We reconvene in a regular hearing. A motion?
Um.
Got a motion, got a second and discussion. On the first say aye.
Aye.
Both likewise, ayes have it. Resolution?
I know we have those two still pending. I'm not sure if we have anything new.
Ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, other members of council. We have uh two items on the agenda. We are still on hold on item A. Just waiting on further advice from the company on that. So we'll do item B. This is the one for which we just had the public hearing. This is third reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero seven. You've had a full copy of this ordinance since second reading. The ordinance to authorize the conveyance of a portion of Marion County Tax Parcel Number zero one nine dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero six five dash zero 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 containing one acre off of Highway five oh one to H T C Incorporated pursuant to the terms of a purchase and sale agreement attached here too. I made a part here of to authorize the county administrator or the chairman of county council to execute any and all documents for the conveyance and transfer of the property and authorize all other matters related there too to effectuate the conveyance. I need to take action on third reading please.
First, my attorney.
The move.
Second. You got a motion, got a second and a discussion? On the first say aye.
Aye.
Both likewise, ayes have it.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Committee report number, number one has nothing at this time?
Committee number two has nothing at this time. And as far as I know, Sabrina, there's nothing before that committee is. Thank you.
Chair, legal update?
You got there, both taking.
It's been hot today.
Yeah.
Legal update, that's Mr. Turner. Legal update?
I I don't have anything in this section too.
This time. Sheriff Brian Wallace and Jimmy Ford.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, member of the council, sheriff, Sabrina, attorney. Uh, I will be brief because Jimmy's coming up next, so uh we'll get this out the way, but uh just to kind of bring everybody up to date, bring council up to date, as council is aware, and I've spoken many times that our local detention center uh falls under minimal standards of South Carolina Department of Corrections. And we have some good news. We've been uh under Director Floyd's leadership and work uh over the past uh five or six years that he's been here with us, but you know, in twenty two, twenty nineteen, Department of Corrections uh showed that detention center had forty seven deficiencies. And the fire marshal showed we had thirty one deficiencies. As of March of twenty fourth this year, or last year, under our expectation, we only had nine deficiencies. Really, the only way to fix those is with the new addition and expansion. Uh, we've done, uh, without that, we've done all we can do on that. And I'm happy to report that our fire marshal um as our last report shows zero deficiencies. Now, we will have to uh at a later date talk about our generator. We're gonna have to update that. And I can go in kind of plant the seed that's expensive. So we will have to update our uh uh generator uh probably this year, but we're doing good. Uh Director Floyd and his staff and we're at the point now to where we're ready to uh move into the next phase with the expansion at the detention center. Uh, we have that money uh is there. We we spoke with council, give you an update. Department of Corrections give us the green light. The building inspectors give it, give us the green light. Uh, give constructions here tonight with us. Uh, show you the plans and where we're going and we need uh just want to make, be transparent with council and get y'all's approval as uh we move forward this next step. So at this time, I'm gonna have Director Floyd come up and give a uh brief overview.
Sure, before you go, if I, if you said the generator, let me.
Yeah, they've uh, we've had them out there uh planted out there, you know, several times in the last few months and they were out there this week. Every time they're there, it's about three dollars. That generator been there from, from Texas, it was.
Is the original generator is twenty seven old.
How? How old do you say, twenty eight?
Put in in nineteen ninety seven and been there ever since construction in ninety seven, the opening in ninety eight.
The gas or diesel? Well, diesel or propane or natural?
It it's natural gas. Uh, and I want to be briefly, well, as Senator Williams accurately put out earlier, broadly is clarity, you have the packet in front of you, all of you. Um, it shows the the plans for what we have got laid out as the next step, which is building a support building in a commercial metal building and attaching it to jail because that is significantly cheaper than building the additional storage space inside of the housing. Um. There is also in the money there following this, and Sheriff Wallace already said, we've already received the Department of Correction approval on the plans. Gilbert has already moved forward with the building inspector uh in the building department in Jonathan and Wayne Fox reviewing those plans and approving the plan with issuing the building permit. Um, and what this support building does for us is it clears all the remaining deficiencies that we've got with the exception of those that are going to take additional house. And it also lays the foundation for that expansion of additional housing with our current law, we will not support the expansion. Our current storage space does not support what we have now, much less the expansion. And our inmate property area does not support the expansion. So at this point, we're here to as Sheriff Wallace said, provide y'all the plans since the money's already in place. It was done on a design bid or design build bid that was awarded to Gilbert Construction as the best option that was brought to council and approved that council over a year ago. Um, and we're at the point now that we are ready to move forward with broken ground and having the official groundbreaking ceremony with the council.
You said the money is already there?
Yes, sir. Money is already there. All of this is part of the local option sales tax, the five million dollars that was allocated for detention center upgrades. There is currently a little over two million dollars remaining in that fund after all the upgrades that we've already done. And that money is the money that is already there and in place to pay for this portion of the expansion.
Well, the next portion will be all us?
Or? No, the money's already there. The the, this is one point six plus what's already been expended, which is about two ninety. And there's a little over two million sitting there waiting for us to expend to do this. And that's not touching the two and a half million that Senator Williams uh for the detention center upgrade, renovation and expansion. And there's still that money sitting waiting in well. So no, we're not here to ask the council to allocate any money. The money is already in place. This is simply we want to be transparent. We want to show you the plans that we've come up with. Show you that we've already got the Department of Corrections approval. We've already got the building permit. We're ready to move forward. Explain you what this will do for us in the overall process. And then hopefully schedule sometime in the next week or two to actually have an official groundbreaking ceremony and act to get started with the construction.
How long would it take to complete this construction?
Uh, be scheduled. If we're able to start in early August, and then we could schedule the official groundbreaking ceremony, perhaps first week of August and start by second or third week, the projection ones that you should complete it by the end of March twenty sixth.
Not many projects that we got, the money is in place.
Yeah, that's a good thing. We have, we myself, the sheriff, we have tried to be very frugal with the mo, with that money that was there, body upgrade and get the notice done for the money that was available. And quite frankly, I think we've done a pretty good job with it. Because we have, Sheriff Wallace did not go into the the lift, which is quite extensive with all the upgrades that we managed to do with the other money. Including correcting things such as the emergency lighting, which everyone who's on council at the time that we dealt with green bulb, I think it was, knows what a mess that turned into. And it was a significant thing getting it corrected and and fixed. But, you know, from fire marshal is important, us being able to go down to the zero deficiencies. Thirty one, I think it was, thirty one, thirty seven, thirty, thirty one deficiencies. Uh, I think we done it extremely. I think we've, we worked really hard to get rid of those deficiencies. And the big thing with getting rid of those deficiencies is it lowered the liability for the county. Because every one of those efficiency is a liability and a potential for a suit against the county.
Ms. Floyd, do you ever uh meet this guy that works with you full time out there? I know you did have you do.
I do.
Sound like he doing a good job.
He does. He really does. We are blessed to have gone home with him by making.
That's a good guy, yeah.
And he does it and he, he does a super job and keep our system running operation and makes the overall building and facility.
Well, good to see you up and going. Thank you for being back. Thank you.
Uh, you, thank you for being here. Um, and uh, it's good to see you back.
Thank you, thank you. Blessing you back, you know, pray to God, uh, telling through his will and his grace on family and not.
Well, you have remained in our public and private prayers since we were made aware of your um illness. Uh, have you guys prepared the letter to respond back to S E D C? I think it's due pretty soon. Um, about what the plans are um in response to their last letter?
Uh, that is the best of my knowledge, uh, Captain Roger, that's already been sent.
Okay. So I think that that it was in August.
Yeah, I am.
August, the first, the second week of August, it was due. I think they wanted the chairman to respond to what the plans were
Yes, and.
For the upgrades and to.
And that's one good thing uh with the new personnel of the Department of Corrections, they're looking to deal with. And I am actually serving only the state committee for the updating of the standard with the personnel from the Department of Corrections. So I am on the phone with them and they're well aware of of everything that we're doing. But I found at least with the new group of personnel of there communication is key. And in communicating with them, we've been able to head off a lot of things we would have potentially been written up or of the thing under previous.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment. Uh, so many times in a small community, we don't realize how dedicated uh employees you have. And about, I'd say a month, month and a half ago, we were in a budget here. And our sheriff couldn't answer a question. And here's, this man was fighting cancer. He gets on the phone, calls and takes care of the business and does a wonderful job. And Jimmy, all of us have been praying for it, you know that, but
I do, thank you.
That's what dedication is about. Not many people would know that, but we wanted you to be aware that while he was fighting cancer, his, he still wanted to be a part of what they had going on. And that's all we thank.
The the sheriff made sure I got a a computer laptop to take. Thing I needed to connect to so I could work remotely.
I should, I should know. But we appreciate it.
But it was, it was a blessing. I thank everyone for the prayers. It is wonderful to be back even on light duty as it is right now for the next uh six weeks or so until my next.
I thought that's what you stayed on.
With everything I I'm doing here, though, not hardly. Uh, but it's uh, it's a blessing to be back even on light duty for the next six, you know, it's a so, um, yeah. And I'm, you know, if if anybody has any questions, we tried to lay everything out in the plan so you could see everything and be transparent with everything and be positive to you.
Well, you have, and I appreciate everything you've done, Jim.
Thank you.
What are you asking from council or is this?
This is because y'all had already approved the the selection of Gilbert Construction for the design build uh R F Q consent out. Basically, this is simply an informational because y'all had already approved the selection of them for the design of what we're doing and the build of it. And this is the final of the negotiation. Now, obviously, under under that, you could say, no, we've changed our minds and say, no, we're not going to do that. But there's nothing required at this time other than us bringing the information to y'all and asking y'all to please let, say, let's move forward and scheduling an official groundbreaking so that Gilbert Construction can actually get in and we can start moving forward on this part of the project.
We need a motion.
Sheriff. I may before you uh take a motion on this, and I agree with uh the sheriff and Mr. Ford, uh we've made a, they've made a lot of progress at that detention center. You all know where we were with uh South Carolina D O C. Department of Correction. They had a lot of deficiencies out there. And because of your vision and your commitment, um, you were able to uh uh get the capital sales tax project uh passed. And within that, there was a five million dollar um um budget line to go towards the jail to address the deficiencies. And this is that um next phase of the support building. But I think also what needs to happen as well is, and you've heard uh Mr. Floyd, I'm looking to the generator. It's kind of on its last leg, twenty eight years old. Um, lease. In the last month or so, two months, they've been out there three times for services. Each time it costs you three thousand dollars. It's not gonna get any better. What I also would like to recommend is the approval to replace the generator. It just makes sense. And um, and in replacing the generator, it would be a uh different type of setup because right now, uh I don't know whether you all are aware or not, but right now, the uh entire detention detention center is not uh serviced by the generator. If the power goes out, you will not have power in your kitchen. So your freezers, your coolers, your kitchen, all those things are down. And so with this new uh generator that we uh, they would like to replace it with, uh, the entire detention center would be serviced by that generator, which means if the power goes down, everything would be uh powered by the generator. And that's not the case. And it will save us some money uh going forward because it's all have to be wired in and then with the new uh system and everything and the uh addition and what have it. And this would be much cheaper. And the um, the the good thing about it is the money is there. As you, as you all remember, I believe it was last year, um, last state appropriation uh bill, we were able to secure two and a half million dollars to help address some of the jail deficiencies. So that money is there. It was two and a half a mistake.
So we have the money to pray for.
Yeah, the money is set in.
I move we uh go ahead and have get a generators second.
Thank you.
And there is information in the packet.
Yeah, my only question is, I know we're gonna bid it out. You gotta bid it outside for the goods the cheapest because I know in the past
Right.
We've been doing some things in our county that were not bid by our procurement. We want to make sure.
Well.
No, we any question about that.
No, I was gonna say, if I may, we actually bid the generator out as part of a option. As part of what Gilbert, because we knew this was coming.
Right.
And there's actually documentation included in your packet. Uh, I think about the fifth page that shows that if we did the generator at the same time and doing the support building construction, we'll save a little over forty thousand dollars from doing them separate. Which is another reason, you know, if we can save you forty thousand dollars and we're going to have to do it anyway, we should. Um, but we were planning for part of this. It's just we weren't necessarily planning to have to be spending the money with Blanchard right now to keep the generator up and going because it actually went down and failed again this morning, and they've got to come to it again. Um. And just so y'all note or understand part of it, the electrical parts is the biggest part of the cost in this. And the reason that is is because the electrical code have changed so much since the jail was built. Uh, to put, go back and try to rewire the existing. It's not feasible or really possible because there's four difference, four different electrical rooms in that building, four different sets of panels. Um, and you basically had to shut the entire building down for several, several weeks, possibly even a couple of months and rewire the whole building. Bring it up to current code, which is what we would have to do if we started trying to add wiring into the current electrical system there. So everything that we do to keep from having to do that and incurring the cost. And the electricians telling us they're not even sure that we can really do it anyway because of how much deconstruction would have to be doing in the building to pull all that new wire, especially for the new codes on the emergency power. That the absolute simplest thing to do is leave the existing as is, put in a new generator, and you'll see that as part of this plan, build a small new electrical room that we would feed the power into and then distribute the power from there to the existing and to the new. So we've taken, we've taken all of that into account.
And if I could have one thing that I think is important, I wanna, I'd like to caution uh the council. We can't let our guard down and we can't get comfortable uh because we got another phase that we gonna have to address to come in and find with S C D O T, I mean, uh, hit Department of Corrections. And it's a pretty big, big um ticket item. It's the housing part. And I think the last cost estimate we received on that was about eighteen million dollars. So we need to be thinking uh about how we can uh start to address that phase. Because we gonna have to do it and it's got to be something kind of long term. Uh, and we have some ideas and at the appropriate time, we will share those ideas with you all and.
And and I think the majority of the council was, was present the day that C G L came and presented the jail need study and and showed how many square footage and what how many additional beds we needed to build and their estimated cost. There are some things going on now on the standards committee that I I'm currently sitting on. And hopefully it will make it a little bit cheaper, but it's still going to be a major investment.
You got a motion on the floor to replace the generator? I guess.
Already got a say.
Got a motion, got a second, any more discussion? On the first say aye.
Aye.
Both likewise, ayes have it. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
We look forward to scheduling the official groundbreaking ceremony with have, with you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the council members that are going to be there with a pretty shovel to throw to the dirt and we'll get started.
I do know the first week of August, a lot of it will be accomplished, so.
Then I will, with Senator Williams, for when the council wants to do that official groundbreaking and we'll just try to do it as soon as possible and a week here or there, this has been a long term project getting to this point. And a week's not going to kill us one way or the other.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Red update?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, other members of the council, you should have a bid tabulation sheet in front of you that um uh pertains to the fire training facility, uh, the roadway. Um. This is uh uh, we've uh received three bids uh to construct the roadway. And and this is a C T C reimbursable um grant. Uh, the uh, put the face down. And this is where, when they delivered the bull head system, uh, actually it was supposed to be delivered this week. But then they called and they kind of pushed it up to uh the week of uh August eighteenth is when it is now scheduled to be delivered. And this roadway had to be put in um so that they can get this big crane and all the big trucks in there. It will come on like four tractor trailer trucks out of uh Arizona. It's a stated art um system. It's a free store uh uh system uh that all the fire departments in the county will be able to utilize this training facility uh at this uh side on uh Greater Road. We had three bids, as you can see, and um uh the lowest bid was actually R E Goodson uh for eighty four thousand one hundred and twenty six dollars. And of course, this is the same bid that I hold you all on because thousands of assets, or they were supposed to do deliver this week, like I said, but they pushed it back, but they had already uh told the council. So we just was making an official part of the racket. So I would recommend that uh we accept the bid for uh R E Goodson Construction.
So who?
Second.
Got a motion, got a second to accept the bid for R E Goodson? Any discussion? On the first say aye.
Aye.
Both likewise, ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, other members of the council, you should have in front of you the uh uh grass cutting contract for the new Marion County Law Enforcement and Facility. There again, uh, just finished instructing uh uh completing the uh new law enforcement training facility uh located also out there at uh Home Gerland Road next to the Sheriff Department and also an indoor outdoor shooting range and enforcement. You all um awarded this uh grass cutting contract. Um, in twenty three, I believe it was, uh, this was not part of that contract. And so we uh took uh bids uh on just cutting the grass there at the law enforcement. there at the law enforcement training facility and the uh shooting range. And we had uh three bids and lighthouse financial maintenance was the lowest bid at the initial cut would be three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And thereafter, cutting five weekly, a hundred and fifty dollars per cut. And I would recommend to the council to accept this bid.
So Lou. Second.
All right, got a motion, got a second to accept this bid and discussion?
I have a question. Do you, is this annually, I mean, every other week they're gonna cut?
Yes, by, by week.
So about during the winter, is any unification or anything we gonna come into that we are not aware of?
Well, nothing that I can think of right now is the floor because there are no trees and all those kinds. Pretty open, so it should be fair metal uh uh maintenance uh during the winter. So I don't foresee anything that would uh cause any concern.
Is this for a year term?
It is. Well, uh, that's a good question. The bid does not specify that. Um, so it would, um, I might need, um, um, uh, legal, could I, could I suggest a, what's the next quote for our law?
Remind my question.
That, that, that's for that law carrier that is done by yearly unless we agree to extend.
That's correct.
I want to say that we could add this to one of those. I would finish.
Well, and you could do that, and you can add this one, I believe, uh, to his existing contract. Is that not correct?
Um, and I ask that we reserve this for after executive session.
Okay.
Cause I, I have a contractual matter to talk with you about executive session and this.
Me too.
Thank you. Um, next, um.
Uh, Sabrina's note that we withdrawed a motion to after the executive session.
Oh yeah, here it is. Oh yeah. Uh, next, in front of you, you should have uh a copy of the uh fire feeds for the uh fire departments throughout the county. Um, and uh this year, uh, this is the amount that was collected uh from the fire feeds, um, roughly it was five hundred and twenty-nine thousand or some change. But this is uh what it came out to be uh uh per fire department based on the formula that all the fire chiefs agreed to last year. And that has not changed and you have it in front of you and you see what those numbers are. And uh, and I know you all been getting calls from the uh various fire departments uh uh ready for their allocation. I've been getting them as well. And so I would uh recommend to the council to accept uh this um fire fee, uh fire fee allocation.
So who second?
Got a motion, got a secondary discussion?
We're just gonna decrease in collection.
Yeah, we had a little decrease in collection. Yeah.
On the first side.
Aye.
So likewise, I was having.
Uh, last, Mr. Chairman, member of the council, other members of the council. Um, we, uh, I'd like for us to, uh, for you all to look at uh 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 possibly revising our educational requirements as it relates to uh our hiring uh practices. Uh, basically what we um have, uh, what we've run into is that, you know, and, and I know you all been getting bombarded with calls about the roads and behind in pretty bad shape, but Public Works right now, uh, uh, Public Works is down about four employees. And what we have been experiencing is that we get good applicants, we go through the interview process, and someone who um been doing a, a, uh, operating heavy equipment for the past twenty or thirty years, got a wealth of experience and knowledge, don't need no uh O J T on the job training. And, and we get right down to it. We feel like we got the perfect uh uh candidate. And then at the conclusion of the uh interview, we discovered they do not have a high school diploma. And so what I'm uh asking of you to reconsider uh 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 revising our education requirements as it relates only to public works and building and maintenance, like janitorial staff. But because we have uh missed out on a lot of good uh qualified applicants because not having a high school diploma, you know. They would have dropped out in the eleventh grade or twelfth grade and then go back and went um straight into the workforce and operating heavy equipment ever since twenty, twenty-five years, but never went back and got a high school diploma. And it's not like we have people standing in line and we have a lot to choose from. And so I think uh doing this could help us better uh uh find some good uh heavy equipment operators. And I would like uh to work with our uh attorney, our uh employment and labor attorney on the revision of this uh policy.
So who?
Second.
Motion, got a second, any discussion?
I support this whole argument. I would just suggest working with the labor attorney that we make sure that we can uh verify that the person meets a certain degree of level.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. Now, had we decided on how many years' experience is gonna be applicable to the job?
Well, I mean, I'd like for um uh for uh myself and um and the interview team to have a little discretion on that and determining that. I think we can, and of course, the day I'll be in the road, I mean, the Public Works Director uh got a lot of experience in that area and I, I think it'd be kind of judgmental.
Deputy Minister, just, just to clarify, can you state the areas we've only gonna approve for?
Yes, only for public works and building and maintenance.
Now, the supervisor for building and maintenance, they need to know what, you know what I'm saying? I got you.
All right, got a motion, got a second?
Let me, let me say one other thing, you know. This really makes me feel good. Cause I know a lot of people who, for whatever reason, didn't complete the education. And in some cases, they don't have. That's right. And I know people who can do that. Heavy equipment. And there's a lot of people that came to it. But this is a blessing. Just gonna pretty help us in that.
I believe so.
I believe it will.
Yeah, there were a lot of people who did not receive their high school diplomas because they couldn't pass the H A C D.
That's true. Yeah.
And now only recently, in I think last two years, the state has provided the Act one fifty-five bill to allow people to go back and get their diplomas if they did not pass the H A C D.
I think this will have.
Yes, it will.
All in favor of side?
Aye.
Who's likewise, I said.
Well, last but not least, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, you have the financial narrative uh before you, I believe, for June twenty twenty-five. You can uh uh produce it at your convenience and it kind of make that uh where we uh are, were in terms of uh, uh, in the uh, the physical. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Other than executive session, contractual back.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Questions, comments from members of council?
Got a couple. And one relates to our sheriff during our budget system. When we were doing the, 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 all the work that we did, four, five, six thousand. Did we get straight the Tyler? That's all I remember here. The silent Tyler system, let us know if our budgets are right. Or is it not? Did we, did we ever do anything on that?
I think my budget sheet that they give us uh a few weeks ago replaced. Obviously on our style was, we would have that issue to us and it's a little more with the deal with that pilot. But I think there's some thing that we, there's some, there's some issues we have got to work out only as us or them or who, but uh.
And you know why I said it? We were looking at the budget. We were showing one thing and then y'all were showing another. And it just seemed to me like if we don't go ahead and get it straight, we still not want to. This is me. The Tyler system, in my opinion, dealing about the computer program.
Very.
You have my career.
Just for audience and people watching, can you step up a bit?
Uh, to echo what the sheriff said, the Tyler system, by frankly, could be a lot clearer in the way it displayed the information. I think the, the information there is simply reading it correctly, the data that it puts out. And I think that is something that we need, as a county, we need Tyler to show us exactly how it is putting that data out. Because to me, the simplest thing would be, instead of the way it displays the number, it displays total budget, amount spent and amount remaining on a mile open. And it doesn't do that. And it makes it hard to track and keep up. There are much better ways for it to display that information.
And my other question, I don't know if y'all had any question about our animal shelter. And I wanted to, I sent her to come forward and tell us everything he knows about the animal shelter.
Well, that's very little.
Um, Councilman Floyd, I did have the pleasure of going out to the animal shelter last week.
Well, good.
And um, it was bare. I mean, it, it was a noticeable difference. And I did see some of the things that they were talking about before. The unit does say air, but they didn't have any air. And um, but it was a lot cooler, a lot cooler. I went out there when it was hot last month and I went back last week and it was a, it's, it's a major change. Um, I didn't see any, I didn't see a reason for anyone to have any reason to complain about the temperature in there. And I did speak to the ladies from the nonprofit that helps out at the shelter as well. But um, it, it, it was a noticeable difference in what we had before. Cause before we had a sweatbox.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, it's, it's a big difference.
And you say it still doesn't have air?
They have air now. They have air. They have air. They have fans. Um, they probably had probably ten different fans going to pull the, the air down to where the dogs were. Um, but they did have air conditioners working. The um, I think the last time we met, no, two times ago when we met, when we went ahead and approved for that to be done, it's done. It's done. It's done. And it, and it's a noticeable difference.
Yeah, I just echo what Councilman Gilcrees just said. Um, um, it's a world of difference out there with the animals in terms of the uh condition. Um, the units have been installed. Uh, they did a good job doing that. Fans have been installed. But we're, we're also looking at where do we go next and what really, what we, a long-term plan that would be sustainable uh for our current um overcrowdedness there and also for future growth. And so we're working on that and uh we're, we're evaluating uh uh the animal shelter. There's a lot going on out there and a lot to kind of get your arms around. But um, we're, we're working on that and it's, it's gonna take some time, but um, looking at probably bringing someone in. Of course, I will run that by you all before we do that. That can kind of help guide us that, you know, have the experience in that area with animal shelters and uh so forth. And um, and so um, we're, we're, we're studying that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll finish up that one question.
Thank you. Cause some of us have been asking questions for a year. What's the plan? We still right back where we were a year ago, so I, I appreciate you doing that, Senator Weeden.
Yeah, but I won't say that uh that there's not a plan, but I think there, there was a better plan.
Good.
It's good.
Mr. Chairman, um, Senator Williams, I want to thank you for um sending the guys out the knuckles to take care of those dirt roads out there. Um, it's, they, they came out, I think it was yesterday and Tuesday. And um, they did a wonderful job. It was a whole lot better than what it was.
And, and like I said, you know, they're behind. We've been getting uh a lot of rainfall. You all know that. It seemed like the grass is uh is growing more this year than I've seen in a long time, growing pretty fast. It was hard to keep up with. And then being down four employees and public works just kind of compounds uh the situation. And so uh, but we um, um, we're trying to take care of it. And we, you understand what's going on out there and people are calling and we're trying to respond.
Thank you. And with uh, what people, it is. Senator, uh, we talking about this grass all the time. Had a lady come from Zion, they had to cut their own grass out there. And I know I talked to you about person, that we got to get a hold on this grass in Man County. We got contracted, you're not doing the job. And I know right now you don't have anybody to check behind, but we got to get on that, make sure they doing the job. Cause that lady called me and she said, Mr. Turner, so we had to cut on grass? That's all I got things, you know.
And I'm not sure, uh, Mr. Turner, uh, I think in the contract of the bid um for um these uh with the grass cutting, I believe, is bi-weekly.
Right.
You see what I'm saying? You know, but like I said, the amount of rainfall we've been getting. I mean, you cut the grass today and three days later, I mean, you need to cut it again. And so when you cut it bi-weekly, that's part of the contract. That's.
You know, if somebody keeping up with it, that I went there that day, then we can say, yeah, you did.
We, we, we have a fix for that. We have a plan for that, what we're doing. Uh, cause right now we without a building and maintenance director, so I um, um, asked the uh H R directors today, go ahead, post uh for uh building and maintenance director. Cause you're right, we really need one yesterday.
And we also need posting on it for uh, oh, thirty-four. The last one said on it, but I hadn't seen.
Yes, um, so um, we play that conversation. I mean, we need Rogers today and um, we're working on that as well. So we, we're working on that.
I'll see. Thank, thank you, Chair.
Um, Mr. Deputy Administrator.
Yes, sir.
Things. I just want to remind the public that we do still have a mining moratorium in effect. Uh, and we make sure that people are abiding by that moratorium. Uh, the second thing I want to do is to uh ask you to make sure that H R is posting uh supervisor and management level positions on the South Carolina Association of County Job Board. I think now it should be posted on our website, but um, I always just kind of lost that job. Or any departmental association, almost all counties, I was thinking, there was jobs on that site. So I think for getting to more candidates, um, we usually going there for uh positions to go on. Um, I also want to ask you to have a team that's in all this area to come back with us with some recommendations on implementing impact fees. There are four camps that have implemented these in recent years, Dorchester, Buford, Lancaster, and York County. And so I think looking through what they implemented, likely over a percent title on the search of the counties, we can come up with some recommendations that the council can look at and discuss together to decide what's the best way forward for American counties in terms of implementing impact fees in the, in the county.
Uh, Councilman Rogers, what we can do um is um, ask the Association of the Counties, um, their staff persons that specializes in that, help us and give us some guidance and point us in the right direction. We could have them come down and, 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 and have uh with the council and they talk about uh what that looks like and the pros, the cons and the hot words and, you know, and, and, and so forth. It sounded like that information uh gathered in session. And so you can, that's what I think you got. Basically, you can.
Um, Mr. Brenner, I'm going to take uh Seon Sanders off my board resigned into the hills and I'm going to Jerome Williamson. I have his information for you. And uh, I've already talked to Mr. Sanders. Is he okay with the name? Um, Senator, if I could, can I have you contact the waste management about the trash cans and the trash? Apparently the trash, when they're gathering the trash and flying out the back of the trucks, down the roads and so on. And it's turned out trashy. Um, yes, our own problem I guess. And um, I'm also a woman with a full enough trash can for months. But like I tell you, it's not like we all get special treatment also, you know. I got to complain. I say, well, if you're driving out the driveway, looking at the ditch, that's where mine. I got to complain, I say, well, if we're driving out the driveway, looking at future, that's where mine can send you to. And then like that for a while and other people have been calling.
So I'll get uh uh Miss Tina Swetland, who is the environmental services director, to reach out to waste management.
I also would like to the county to take on and make a bad dish more important. Start scraping that road and if he wins, sorry, make a motion to set that road.
Really, man?
Is this a is this? The road that we previously talked about, but it's a private road. Once this deed is over to the county, but not be, but right now it is. But once the these Mary start signing, sign, I'm making a motion that we accept this road to be straight along with the rest of the county.
Now that way is owned by private, no. So the individual landowners can't give anything, they can't give anything else.
The person that owns it, if they're willing to give a even on it and we accept this road and then we'll get it straight. Is that more clear?
With this man candidate shit. Is that the one we voted against, we did? What's ten?
I made a motion to uh accept it.
Alright, you got a motion for the second?
Our second motion, um if we can get an even for long as it's still a private road, the even has to come from the landowner.
We might need a motion that be amended. Chairman, you might need a little legal advice on that, I would think, as the process in doing that.
Yeah, I I'm not trying to derail the motion or any action you want to take. Um Councilman Rogers is correct that 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 there is some question. I couldn't even tell you, knowing what I knew about the road, I can't tell you who actually owns it today. Um I would do some of some title examination on it and see exactly where best the title is supposed to be. Cause I know there was some time that it was on the tax sale list. Um then that kind of went away, somebody paid it, I don't know who did. So I'm not even sure where the source of title for that road uh lies at the moment. So there was there was a valid motion in the second, so.
Got a motion, got a second, and more to specialists? All in favor say ah.
Ah.
Who's likewise?
Ah.
Alright. Have one more thing.
Let's, you got a spring?
Yes, I guess.
You got. You got a gap?
You got a gap?
You you got eyes?
Show me the raised hands, please.
All in favor, raise the hands. Who's likewise?
You know, and if if we can verify who owns it.
Yeah, I think it's.
Let Chuck check the title. I don't mind.
I said we can revisit this later, but right now it's just too early right now, right?
Um we would all come up with these stills from raises that have given out outside of our political budget that we approve. I make a motion that we would travel those raises from those people that got raises that we did not approve outside of the budget.
Alright, we got a motion from Council Foxworth, you get a second?
I don't think we can withdraw any funds.
If it wasn't approved by council?
No, because what we're going forward, everything has been paid out, been paid on the new budget that was passed. So in order to uh send any income, we have to amend the budget for this that was passed.
Right, if it if it's not in the the budget ordinance that you passed and it goes beyond that, then then it is not in place by itself. So you would don't really need any action to strike it because you didn't approve it to begin with. That makes sense. So if if on an administration level, if it's being paid, then it doesn't need to be paid because it's not within your lawful budget that you passed, is what I'm saying. So you really don't need to take action to take it away other than from an administrative level to strike it if it's there and wasn't in the budget.
Yeah, that's the level. We approved all those that were in there, sections of not getting ratings. Right. The new budget, twenty five, twenty six, approved those ratings because it's part of our budget.
That's correct.
That we've approved.
In the budget.
Yeah.
Same as twenty six budget.
But we're agreeing not to give them raises.
Not.
And would cause that next budget, you're also about not giving raises.
But I think Mr. uh Foxworth is correct in saying, um like you could say that we were not aware of some craziness that were given out uh and like correct in that matter, I think the general consensus was um that once people had started to depend on um some of the new income that it received, that it was not going to be presented. Uh that was general consensus, I'm not saying necessarily because of that, but that was the general consensus by keeping it in place. But this council definitely did not approve, um Mr. Foxworth is correct.
But I I only say that because I wasn't here for that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
What happened?
Yeah, but this is the fact is that you did not approve of it, raise and outside of the budget.
Exactly right.
Alright, any more comments from council? I need a motion to go into ZED recession for contractual and personnel matters. Like I said, got a motion, got a second and discussion, all in favor say ah.
Ah.
Likewise, I have it. Went into executive session, no action was taken. I need a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second and discussion, all in favor say ah.
Ah.
Likewise, I have it. Deputy Minister?
Chairman, uh yes, uh I would uh recommend uh to the council that we uh receive three bids to replace a two and a half ton unit at the Maryland County Building uh located on Liberty Street. We have three bids and um lowest bid is forty eight hundred dollars. That is by Rawl Services LLC and I would recommend uh council to approve this bid.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second and discussion, all in favor say ah.
Ah.
Who's likewise, I have it.
Alright, I was thinking that.
We're journey.